Meeting to order will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic which has been established, one nation, under one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll move to call rule, please.
Councilmember Cantio?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Salisbury?
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer?
I'm here.
Uh, for the agenda tonight, I'd like to motion to add item F under new business, the permission from the chamber for the street closures for Riverwalk.
So moved.
I'll support it.
Okay, any other discussion or changes to the agenda? Okay, a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes.
So moved, support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yep.
Councilmember Salisbury?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cantio?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move to item number three, citizen comment, items on the agenda. Put the podium here.
They don't make them big enough. Herb VanderGeld, 2204 G Drive. I come here today representing myself officially, unofficially, all the neighbors that I have on G Drive. Across the street from us several months ago, an applicant applied for and was granted a special use permit, which allowed him to rent his occupancy out for anybody who wants to rent it, I guess. It's an Airbnb. And, um, and as neighbors, we came in and we voiced our opinion. We said things like, uh, it doesn't belong here, it's too noisy, it's not part of the neighborhood, it's commercial activity and all that. Nevertheless, um, he was granted his special use permit and I understand all the reasons why. And this is not criticism of the board. This is not even criticism of the people who rent that B and B. They're probably nice people, I don't know, they're a little loud. Um, they bring on, they bring too many cars there. But, other than that, I regard this as a breakdown in the community. One of the stalwart identifiers of a stable community is people who know their neighbors. They talk to their neighbors, they walk around, and they get to know each other. And when you lose that neighborly element of a community, you start to have some breakdown. And I, I don't think that's happened here, but it's a bellwether. And so, my question is, and I have a question, is what can we do? Can we, uh, can we make an appeal to the special use permit? Can, you know, what can we do other than sit around and wring our hands and say how horrible this is? But is there, is there a remedy for this? That's my question, it's kind of rhetorical, I don't expect an answer right away, but just voicing my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Herb. There.
No, short message, didn't it? Uh, Perry Beecham resides at 924 Riverside. Just a few comments. Hudson is certainly wonderful, if you've traveled that. Also, North Broadway is wonderful. I do have a couple, um, questions about that. I really think that at the time that the bids went out, um, for the main hall covers, uh, I know that, uh, the city manager, uh, posted it, also called a couple. But I also think that the city council should have directed to go and to seek some more bids for that. And, and K and R might have been the greatest bid there was, but only having one bid, uh, I question that, um, for the amount. And, you know, could we have gotten it less? And I'm, I'm saying that because we're coming up with some other things today, tonight, that, that's determined that, you know, the city doesn't need it, can't afford it, et cetera. And I, I just think we have to be watchful of our dollars and, and go from there. On, on regards to Broadway, North Broadway, I have some questions. And I, and sometimes I think there's not a lot of forethought that has gone into the project. Um, we, at the, where light and power comes down, there's two ramps. Um, the city determined to remove one of the ramps. They said it led to nowhere, um, wasn't meeting the ADA requirements, different things. But they left the other ramp, which is further away from the sidewalk, that it goes along Broadway on the west side, Riverside goes along there. And it just, it doesn't, to me, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. If you're leaving the one ramp, why incur the cost to remove the other ramp? Um, when we look at Riverside and Elm, um, new ramps were put in, um, and there was, there's currently no sidewalk that goes on the north side of Elm. Well, when, if there ever should be a sidewalk, um, the way the ramp was designed, you'd have to completely remove that. And I look at, like, Virgin's Township, where they put a light in out at Virgin's in Lincoln Lake. No, there's no sidewalk there, but they made sure that they had the, the four corners all had the ramps and the ADA ramps with the visually impaired, uh, for the visually impaired. And again, when we look at the ramp next to Low Light and Power, that we did remain there, again, it's not, uh, designed for the, um, visually impaired. Also, at Chatham, there was a ramp and that went along the north side that, that took you, a little bit of sidewalk and ramp that took you over to, uh, would direct you towards low light and power to get across the street. I, I just question, um, the thought, I just don't think that there's a lot of thought going into the future, um, where sidewalks should go, where they shouldn't go. Um, and, and I know that the city is, um, struggling, like every, uh, city, for revenue. Um, tax dollars, um, were limited. Um, but I think we have to use every dollar that we have very wisely. Again, I know that Lowell's looking at, over the next year or so, double-digit, possibly double-digit increases in our water and sewer rates. Um, so I just think we have to, as a council, as an administration, as a city, we have to look closer to where we're spending our dollars and how we're spending it. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? All businesses empty, new business, five A, Boy Scouts cabin agreement, resolution, Michael.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. For many years, the city has partnered with Lowell Boy Scouts in conjunction with the United Methodist Church to utilize the city-owned property at Scott Park. As you're aware, we have a, you know, property that the city owns over there, and there's a cabin owned by the Lowell Boy Scouts and United Methodist Church on that property. Attached is agreement, and there are new agreement with them for use of the, of the property. The agreement will be for 10 years, as was the one prior. The city, the Boy Scouts will pay one, one dollar per year for the land. I recommend, I, I worded this wrong in the memo. Um, I recommend that the Lowell City Council enter into an agreement with the Lowell United Methodist Church on behalf of Lowell Troop 102 of the Michigan Crossroads Council, the Boy Scouts of America, and approve, uh, the resolution that's in front of you tonight. Um, this has been a standard agreement for many years, uh, and under our charter, we are required to, um, every 10 years, we need to, we need to bring the agreement back. And so they maintain, they maintain the grounds for us, and it's their, it's their building, so it's, and something we've done for many years.
I think they care about him, too. I think it's a lot of use. Uh, anything else on that? I would move that we would approve Resolution 1818 for the Boy Scout cabin.
I support.
Discussion on it, that's 10 years, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Sue?
Councilmember Salisbury?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantio?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Uh, item the 18, 1718 budget amendments and the Resolution 1918.
In front of you is our Resolution for, uh, Resolution 1918, which is our annual budget amendments. New resolution and breakdown of every, of every font of what the, what the modifications are. Uh, kind of highlight this, um, the, um, we did, uh, we did, um, our initial projections at the beginning, of, beginning of the fiscal year were about $23,000 higher. Um, this is mainly due to, um, the, the personal property tax reimbursement that we were supposed, that we were supposed to receive as a result of the reduction of personal property tax, elimination of it back in 2013. Um, we, last year, we received about $100,000 and we use that as our projection, and we only received about $55,000. Unfortunately for this, the state usually gives us information as to how much we're gonna receive every year, whether it's sales tax, Act 51 road funds. They do not do that for the PPT, and it's something that they're working on trying to, to correct, so we don't have these, um, issues in the future. But, um, but we also, well, also to offset that, we did see, um, a significant increase to, um, the sales tax revenue we received through the constitutional revenue sharing. Um, we did see about an additional $16,000 that kind of, um, that kind of broke us off, um, broke us off. Didn't reduce as much as we, we would have lost had we, and that happened. Um, when it comes to expenditures, there's a couple of minor, there's a lot of minor line item stuff, and we've seen some savings in some areas, we've seen some, some increases in some others. The biggest increase really is with the attorneys. Um, if you realize, we've had a lot of issues the last couple of years, and we've had to use the attorney, and, uh, and those costs have been, have been significant. So, um, those are really what the, those are really what it boils down to when it comes to our budget. I, I sense we will come in balanced, if anything, we might have to use about $5,000 in fund balance, in unrestricted fund balance, but we're gonna, we, we kind of prepare, we put cushions in place to make sure that we don't, you know, we don't, we don't have as a significant, um, loss. We don't, we, we, I try to make sure there's protections in place, so we, if these things happen, we break even, so. And I think that's will probably happen.
I have a couple of questions. I don't recall seeing this last year, thank you, this is a great breakout on things. Uh, emergency management salaries. We have about $28,000 in expenses there that wasn't budgeted for. How does that come in?
Sure, I can explain that. That was from the flood. We had to, um, we had to segregate all costs for the flood in order to get reimbursed, and that's what we did. We segregated everything into that line item. And, um, out of all of those costs, we were only, I mean, out of all of those costs that line item, we were only able to receive $9,000 back from the state. But that's, that's the explanation for that.
Okay. Uh, other questions? Um, capital outlay, professional services under major streets and local streets, and winter maintenance rentals were a pretty big number. What, what do we rent in the winter for equipment?
What we, what that, what that rental is, is the cost to utilize our equipment. It's a cost accounting method, so we charge our equipment, which under what's called Schedule C rate. Um, the state of Michigan designates those for every piece of equipment. There's a value, it's how much you charge for it. With the winter work that we had to do, we've used our equipment a lot more than we budgeted, so that caused that. Um, and then the professional services, that was, um, that was a street asset management plan. We initially did not budget for that, but, um, we are still working on our street asset management plan that's all part of the Saw Grant.
All right. One other thing I saw on there, then the parks grant shows up at $500,000 and it goes out as an expenditure. Do we have that money?
Yes.
That's $500,000?
Yes.
That answered my questions. Oh, one more. Uh, on the final page of this, the equipment, we had budgeted $215 and ended up with $355 in that. Uh, on the last page of the resolution. It's not in the breakdown at all, it's here on the sheet that we have. Kind of, the rest of them come in real close to what revenue and appropriations were, but that one was a significant difference.
It wasn't paid in?
Yes, yeah.
You would have been using cash on the end when you budgeted, like on that one?
Is that one we, but we haven't made any major equipment purchases this year.
Um, there was...
Was that the buy-up proceeds? Or the lease purchase?
Yeah, and there's, um, a couple of mowers, mower trailer, replace, replace a pickup truck. Oh, and depreciation is a major part of that.
Is that part, so is that the, is that what it is, is the depreciation?
Yes.
Cause I'm looking at the, I mean, I'm looking at what we budgeted and what we spent, you know, out of the, I mean, out of the...
Because we forgot to budget for depreciation.
Right. Cause I mean, if I look at our equipment, it's, it's not that much, I mean...
There's just a big differential there, so just asking a question.
No, it's fine.
Depreciation.
We don't, we don't, depreciation really isn't a cash expense for us, it's something we show in our books, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Item up for, like, your suit. Okay, all right. I'll move that we approve Resolution 1918 outlines the amendments to the city Lowell annual budget fiscally here, 1718.
I'll support.
Okay, anybody else? Sue?
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantio?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
And Councilmember Salisbury?
Yes.
All right, item C is the PCI rate schedule.
With PCI coming on board to provide building inspection services beginning on July 2nd, 2018, the city needs to set a rate schedule for their services. Um, attached are the fee schedules for the building plumbing, mechanical, electrical inspection services they provide. They're somewhat different from what the fee schedule is set by Cascade Township was. Fees must be approved via resolution, and there are four separate resolutions to be approved for each type of inspection. Just a, just a follow-up question from the last meeting. Um, there was a question as to how much revenue we received from Cascade Township through the permits. It was approximately $8,000 annually. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve Resolutions 20-18 through 23-18 to set the fee schedules for the building plumbing electrical and mechanical inspection services.
You know, which ones have, are there any that have increased, like, exponentially from where we were at?
No, there's been no major, I mean, they might have gone up like, like percentage-wise in some things, and then less in others, so at, at the end of the day, I think it's pretty similar to what we are now.
It looks like a lot more of these are based on value, too, than they used to be.
Yeah, they use a different amount for rev, I mean, basically, for Cascade, they did revenue as well, based on the, on the amount, but they, would they, I can't remember off the top of my head, but one charged more for, for the planned revenue fees, and the other one charged more for the, the inspection. So, if you look at it, it's probably near what we're, what we're charging now.
This seems pretty common.
It is, yeah. Their, their fees are right in line with everybody else, and they all shift a little one way or another, but I think this is a great move for the city.
Do you need a motion for each resolution, or can we do all four at once?
Uh, let's do a resolution, motion for each resolution.
All right.
I'll make a motion for, uh, Resolution 2018.
Supports.
Make a resolution for, uh, 2318.
I'll support. And we need 2118.
I'll make a motion for Resolution 2118.
Support. And I'll make a motion for 2218.
I'll support that.
Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantio?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury?
Yes.
And Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, item D, sidewalk ramp on North Broadway.
On May 25th, 2018, complaint was received during the North Broadway repave paving project about the removal of sidewalk ramps and the lack of an accessible handicap ramp in front of Low Light and Power. Uh, accessible handicap parking is not available immediately to the Low Light Power facility and was not planned as part of the North Broadway resurfacing project. Furthermore, the city has not received any undocumented complaints about ADA accessibility issues within the project area until this issue. The nearest ADA accessible parking is located in the city-owned parking lot to the south of LLP, uh, Low Light Power, which is approximately 185 feet away. City administration initiated review of ADA requirements in response to the complaint. According to the United States Access Board, Chapter 5, accessible parking is not required on public streets. Furthermore, it should be noted that the Access Board does not specify a maximum travel distance in the standards. Specifically in the question and answer section of Chapter 5, a specific question was posted regarding distance. Do the standards specify a maximum tracks of travel distance between parking spaces and facility entrances? No. The standards require that accessible parking spaces be on the shortest accessible route to an accessible entrance, but they do not specify a maximum travel distance, nor do they require that parking be installed where not is planned, for example, directly in front of the entrance. If city council opts to install a ramp in response to this, the installation of a sidewalk ramp would cost approximately $1,500 to $2,000 and would require realigning public space to create an egress zone on the one-way section of North Broadway. If the council chose to install this, we could use Act 51 road funds, um, as we are now required to utilize 1% of those funds to address ADA accessibility issues adjacent to public roadways. Fitting the ramp into a small space available will be a challenge to meet the ADA slow requirements, but the solution is possible. Um, I was not here the day of the complaint being filed, but I did take a look at it when I returned. And my experience with ADA, in that area, ADA is met. Um, I, there, all ADA requirements are met in that area. We have adequate parking, um, according to the ADA standards in the parking lot. Um, the, the parking lot is, um, is within, within compliance. The distance from the Low Light Power building to there is, it's within that requirement. Um, I know it's not the, it's the most ideal location for ADA compliance, but it is met. And, um, uh, I, I, I don't, I don't recommend installing a ramp as we are currently meeting compliance in this area downtown.
Have we had any other complaints in all this time, without anybody not being able to access the Low Light Power building?
I'm not aware of any. Uh, I actually did acquire, it actually is the question that Dick went, being that he is mobilizing in a wheelchair. And, uh, he even said he's been to that building many times, he's never had an issue.
You were chair of that board, did they have any complaints?
We did, and I would like, it, it really wasn't a complaint that came in. Um, Perry Beecham, who's here, he called me and said, hey, they're, you know, getting ready to pave the street, and it doesn't look like there are any ADA ramps. In fact, like you said earlier, we spent money to take away the ramp that was closest to the door. And Mike and I talked about this a little bit, to say, I mean, like Burns, that, the part of the problem you have is if you designate ADA parking, then you lose regular spots and nobody can use it. But as the population ages, um, we did have seven ADA curbs or corners in the budget when they redid North Broadway Street, and they only did six. I respect Mike's opinion, but I also feel if we could have some help that close to the door, if Dick went, felt there wasn't anything, that, that's kind of a changer for me, too. I mean, he's a guy in a wheelchair, I'm not sure how he gets in and out of there. Um, but it just, if there are no requirements that it can be a quarter mile away, that doesn't mean we shouldn't do something better. And 185 feet, it is noise, people in a wheelchair, sometimes it's somebody in a walker or something on crutches, that's just clearing the hurdle of the curb. If $1,500 makes it easy for somebody to get in close to our office where they're paying bills, and, and we already had that money in the street project anyways, I would be in favor of, of doing just that without any ADA parking.
Did they give us credit back on what they did not install?
I'm not sure.
I got an answer on that, I'm looking at that.
Are we able to put the ramp in without designating a parking?
And the project is done, maybe we table this and, and get a little more information on it? I think there's no rush now.
So, so basically, Mike, what you're saying is, we install it, but we're not designating it for ADA, it's just there?
Well, I mean, it, the ramp would be ADA compliant, it's the issue of putting, it's gonna, it's kind of a jag intersection, so the suggestion was putting, was putting, bringing, was bringing the, the parking lane out.
Oh, I'll a little bit further.
We want to make it wide enough and slope at the red angle, and a little bit of space, Dick?
I think it can be done.
Just for clarification, and when Dick always did come, come to Low Light and Power, he always parks, um, across from Light and Power on North Broadway. Um, he always used the ramp that is now gone. You know, so, again, I, I don't know why we removed that ramp and not the other ramp, and... But anyway, just for clarification, that's all. Dick always, and he had no problem getting in to our building.
I would like, I'd like to, I'd like to go see it.
Okay.
And I'd like to get an answer as to whether we're gonna be reimbursed for the other one, that they're not going in. So I'd move that we table it for two weeks, and we come back to it, like, we can all go down there and check it out. Maybe talk to Steve and see what he thinks, oh, there's his building. Good?
Yeah.
All right, I move we table it to the first July meeting.
I'll forward.
Okay, any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantio?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
And Councilmember Salisbury?
Yes.
Uh, item D is the proposed rezoning at 1100 Sibley.
Sue?
Second. Mr. Todd West, who is here today, submitted an application to rezone a parcel located at 1100 Sibley from the PEF Public Facilities District, R2, uh, single family residential. The parcel is located at the southeast corner of Sibley Street and Church Street. Until recently, the subject property was owned by Calvary Christian Reform Church, and a few months ago, the city approved a split that separated the subject property from the larger church property directly to the south. The parcel is presently vacant, and it is our understanding that the applicant seeks to construct 32 family dwellings out of the property. At the July 11th, 2018 planning commission meeting, a public hearing was held regarding the proposed zoning, rezoning. After careful consideration, the planning commission recommended approval of the proposed rezoning to the city council. Attached is a memo from Andy Moore Williams and works also recommending approval as well. It is my recommended motion that the Lowell City Council approve the proposed ordinance amendment 18-03 rezoning 1100 Sibley from PEF Public Facilities to R2 Single or Two Family Residential.
The planning commission, they'll need to show it, definitely, maybe talk about it.
No, we found that it, uh, it met the master plan very well. Um, it fell right in with the surrounding neighborhoods, we couldn't find any, anything wrong, and...
That's, it's gonna be six rentals.
At this time, I don't have a plan other than to build single family, sorry. Uh, Todd West, the applicant, I think this time we don't have a specific plan of what we want to build, just residential units that, I'm a home builder here in town, I've been for the last 18 years, and I'd like to build something there for residential.
I think this is great, we take a piece of property that wasn't paying any taxes or being used, and create additional homes and tax revenue for the city to help fix the roads.
Increase the value around it. All right, I would move that we approve the proposed ordinance amendment 1803 on rezoning of 1100 Sibley.
Support.
Discussion or questions for, any? Now, Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantio?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury?
Yes.
And Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Perfect. Item F is the addition of the sidewalk. Uh, closures, I have a letter here from Liz, uh, out of President Chambers, Mayor DeBoer, and members of the city council. Lowell Area Chamber Commerce... Lowell Area Chamber Commerce is once again proud to present the 24th Annual Riverwalk Festival, Thursday, July 12th, Friday, the 13th, and Saturday, the 14th, 2018. This year's three-day event offers many activities for you and your family to enjoy. Check out our schedule, our website at www.riverwalkfestival.org. For event times, information, and applications, what Liz is asking for today are the street closures. She's requesting permission to close Avery, West Monroe, Thursday, the 12th, beginning at 6:00 a.m. through Saturday, the 14th, at 9:00 d.m. That's where all the food and concessions and stuff are going to be. She's also requesting permission to close Avery, East Monroe, Jefferson, Washington, and North Main to the Lowell School Parking Lot, Saturday, the 14th, at 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and that's where the cruising will be for the cars. The Chambers greatly appreciated our support over the years, and we hope that you will be able to bring your family and friends to enjoy this great festival. This is pretty much the exact same thing we've done for the Riverwalk every single year. I think they do a good job and brings a ton of people to town. I talked to Chief Pirocola, and it's pretty, this is pretty much the normal every single year. So, if there's no more discussion, I move that we approve the Chambers' street closure request for the Riverwalk Festival weekend.
I'll make a motion that we approve the street closures for the Riverwalk weekend.
I'll support it. Anything else? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Alright, item 6 is board commissioner reports, Mr. Canfield.
The Lowell Board met, and the state came out the DNR and walked the route for the proposed trail, and had a few questions which were answered. Their biggest concern was the eastmans on Bowes Road, but with the potential new route through Dr. Regan's property, that solved a lot of problems for them, so that is continuing on. The trail along Alden Nash is nearly complete, expect to see that paved shortly, and so good progress on the trails.
Great. Mr. Chambers?
Planning Commission, we approved the site plan. Lowell Line Power, we're getting a new regulated station over here in the corner in that fenced-in area to increase the gas pressure in the town so we can run the turbines if we have to 24/7. Many of you don't know, or you do know, we've got those two big turbines, we can produce power, but we need natural gas. They're going to start that sometime in July, they'll be finished by October 31st. The Board also approved, spending limit be hiked for Steve, $2,500 or $25,000, which falls in line where a lot of projects have been held up. And up to $50,000 for projects that are already in the works, so we can keep moving. That's it.
Swear to it. Mr. Phillips?
I don't have anything to report at the time.
Mr. Salzweil?
I have nothing.
Alright, I have fire authority last Monday, they covered the new tender schedule, that should be here in November, Tom Pace is coming along. Fire chief's review was fantastic, the personnel committee handled that. They did 97 calls last month, so running about three a day, a little over three a day, so they're doing great, they got some new hires in there, updating the station and the grounds. That's all I have. Move to monthly reports, any questions or discussion on any of the monthly reports? Mr. Burns, that makes it your turn.
I want to provide some updates on the construction. As we know, Hudson was completed very quickly, and I was very glad to see that it was done as very expeditious as possible. Obviously, Monday was a little rough, but the rest of the, the rest of the week is, wasn't too bad, and hopefully, we won't have to deal with that issue for about another 10, 15 years, so that'll, glad to see that that worked as quickly as it did. North Park Broadway, just, the project is near completion, pavement markings on North Broadway will be completed in July, once all the construction is completed on South Broadway, that's when they'll come in and do South and North Broadway and the parking lot. South Broadway, as of Thursday, the major water and sewer underground work was complete on the South Broadway project, and efforts will be shifted to completing the parking lot. Lowell Line Power is going to be out of sight over the next several weeks to complete their conduit and wire installation, in which they'll clean up a significant amount of overhead wires on North and South Broadway. By the end of next week, concrete flatwork should begin on the parking lot with pavement base being completed by the end of the month and final paving by July 2nd if the other cooperates. Installation of the light poles will be delayed because of the long wait time to get those delivered. Last week, actually, also smoke testing, we finished our smoke testing, we're waiting to hear back, the official reports, I know, just in discussion with my staff that was out there involved, that they did find a number of things that they found, and they'll report them to us, mainly, I'll need more clarification obviously from prying them off, but there are some things that we're going to have to look at as a result of those tests. Last week, the state legislature, they submitted, they approved their House Bill and Senate Bills for the upcoming fiscal year budgets. Couple items of note, they did a one-time allocation of $300 million through the end of budget for roads. When they broke it down by jurisdiction as to how much each jurisdiction receives, I looked at that, and there's an increase of about $47,000 to the city of Lowell, or equivalent of about one-sixth the cost of Hudson, of the cost of pave Hudson. So, it's little bit by little bit, but it still doesn't address structural issues that we need to address. Also, they did, there was discussion that they were going to reduce our statutory revenue sharing, that did not happen, they kept it at the same level that it was at this year, and also, there is actually going to be a 2.6% increase to the constitutional revenue sharing, which is a sales tax. So, we are seeing little incremental increases there as well. I sent a newspaper article to the council last week regarding an article in the Grand Rapids Press pertaining to the dispatch situation in Kent County. There's movement right now for the city of Grand Rapids to get into the Kent County system, which we are a member of. The article, at the time it was reported, stated that the, basically that the communities that contract with Kent County are going to see increased costs. Some were a lot more exponential, for example, Kentwood, Wyoming, some of those communities are seeing significant, up to maybe $80,000 more a year in payment, and to the city of Lowell, that the estimate was about $8,000. When that report came out, I got another email or report from, through Kent County, through the Kent County 911 Authority stating that any costs that would have been increased would be borne out by the city of Grand Rapids had they chosen to take part in the system. That situation hasn't been formally decided yet as to what direction they're going to go, and also, there was also in the article, there was also talking about the contracted townships and cities that contract with Kent County shares probably would see reductions. That's not the case either, so we're still waiting additional clarification on that, but the article that I shared with you is, according to Kent County, isn't accurate, but once we get more information, I'll let you know. The website, we are still working on that, trying to get that up and riding, it's moving at snail's pace, and, but we are in the process of starting to migrate things over. I just sent them a bunch, I sent them a large amount of information that they had requested that was sent over today, so hopefully, we can get a finality to that pretty soon, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Still no applications, Sue, for any vacancies? I'm going to talk to Steve when we get back and see if they can put, I noticed a few Light and Power bills, maybe we can get it up to more people, you know, with the buyers guide and the ledger, and, I don't know, maybe get... We have, do you have it there, Sue?
I don't have it with me, but it's...
Board book?
Board review.
Yeah.
And LCTV.
Yep.
Go people, that might be it.
And those were both resignations, so it wasn't, it was somebody who moved, so maybe, and then we maybe can break, but the school newsletters, and that's a way to get it up to...
Herb Van Gogh, 2204. Unfortunately, I will have to resign from the Board of Renewal. We are out of town during the time when the major meetings are, and so I need to resign from that Board.
We need one year's notice, though.
So, there's two openings on Board of Review, so I'll get to Susie when we get back, I'm trying to figure something out, so, good. Council comments, Mr. Canfield?
Thursday night's concert was fabulous, the weather was great, huge crowd, great band down at the library, Riverwalk Festival. Farmers Market is also on Thursdays now, just reminding residents to enjoy those features of Lowell that a lot of communities don't have and we do. The new roads are wonderful, there was some grumbling about things, but a couple of days of inconvenience, and it's the major thoroughfares now, and you know, Broadway's better, we're making progress here. It seems like the roads are terrible, but we are making progress, so thanks for city administration for putting things together and making that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers?
I also like the new roads, I like the railroad crossings even better, they smoothed them out pretty good. And everybody come to the festival down here at Riverwalk and watch good concerts.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I'd like to thank all the staff, and everybody for their hard-working dedication, chief, dear guys, they do a wonderful job. Actually, I think I saw you the other day going above and beyond, I think you had a rodent or something cornered, so, you guys do a lot of nice things that people don't see, and we got great people here, Michael, nice job, the railroad tracks are amazing, I go over those so many times, so, hope everybody has a great week, enjoy.
Thank you. Mr. Salzweil?
I agree on the roads, but we have a lot more work to do, and it's going to take some time and patience, so hopefully, everybody that rides on appreciates them, and gives us time to get the other ones fixed as well, too, so that's it.
Thank you. I've been sitting in on a couple of those dispatch meetings, I think they jumped in all of it, and they said it was going to be done in July, and that, they expected those current Robert's people to just pack their bags and move over there, but Abu County does a central dispatch, and it seems to work pretty well. It'd be a significant cost savings to the city here in Rapids, even if they footed the bill for the increase, I think they'd still save money, so I'm trying to keep up on where that's going at a city level and at a county level, so hopefully, we'll have more information on that in a couple of weeks. Mike and I are flying to Iowa tomorrow to meet with the Light House people, hopefully we'll bring some good stuff back from there. That's all I have, so, Mr. Salzweil?
On that, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:46.
I'll support.
All those in favor, can we thought by saying yes?
Aye.